Uh, this is a new one, a goal. I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to participate in the difficult times we have right now. But we want to get through it. I want to take a second and thank Matt and his staff. I've noticed since this virus has affected our nation is that there were quit working. They found a way to communicate and they made friends and move forward. And I want to thank Matt and his staff for that. I just think. Well, she's been waiting out for it. I haven't seen it, so thanks. Um, at this time, let's all take a few moments. For ourselves, for our nation, for our world, and most importantly, for our children.
Okay, I'm, I'm live streaming the live stream in case you're watching at home, and I think what's going on is the different speakers, everybody's got their speaker on at the same time, so maybe a sound problem here. But we're gonna see if they fix it. We'll just, we'll just ride it out.
I make that motion, Jackie.
Second.
We have a motion. We have to take it. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Non-opposed, motion passed. Start our agenda, the approval of the outline and format of the agenda.
Don't move, Jackie.
Kathy.
We have to take it. Any further discussion? If there's more. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Non-opposed, the format, please. Now, at this time, if, if there's any agenda items that want to be discussed or approved, now is the time to identify.
Is everybody able to hear? If you can, having trouble hearing, just let me know.
Uh, will that go under new business? You know, I talked to you about uh, the suggestion to, to Matt, nail, do I do that nail?
We do that under new business.
Okay, okay.
I'm ranking out playing this day.
I'd like to call uh, number two. Or when I want to, and then I'd like to call one to four.
Further discussion?
We call number two and number four. All of them, the whole number.
I think it would be better if everybody muted themselves unless they're gonna speak. Cause they're drying each other out.
Okay, thank you.
Are any other items on the agenda? Anybody would like to call for a discussion?
I am, wait, wait a minute. Okay, Chris, are we going to, or, and Matt, are we going to, uh, okay, all of these trips that were under lockdown? Yeah, well, oh, the entire number four, okay, okay, I got it.
Yes, well, if it's acceptable to the board, on the consent agenda A, we will vote on every single agenda A except for number two and number four. Then we will come back and discuss two and four and vote on those.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
It, it cuts, it cuts in and out.
Yeah.
Is that better?
That could hear Jackie.
Right.
That's taking to the right.
Are you getting me? Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, so that's why, anytime that we fold here, about number two, number four, we will, we will vote on any of that. We'll come back and discuss that.
Okay.
And, and now we got to go back to recognition.
Uh, for recognition, yes, uh, thank you. I would like to acknowledge three individuals recently this evening. First of all, I know we can't do it in person, and I would like to deal with some persons, I would like to congratulate Dr. Greg Sturgill for obtaining his EDD from Carson, Nevada, a couple of weeks ago. We are proud of him, and that's quite a feat and accomplishment. So congratulations to Dr. Sturgill.
Matt.
Yeah.
Uh, could I, uh, say something real quick? I know, um, I, I'm hoping I speak for the rest of the board when I say how much we appreciate all of Greg's hard work and dedication on getting his doctorate, because that's, that's a really big deal. I mean, we ju- we just see the results, but we're not behind the scenes to see all the hard work and the sleepless nights and the anxiety he's been through along with holding down a full-time job. And I think that's a huge piece of commitment and dedication from our employees, so I'd, I'd like to congratulate him.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Welcome.
Applause, good job.
Our second, second and third recognition district, uh, we did have a news release, uh, from Nokia Hungary. Um, and they are, they are acknowledging, uh, one of six entities recognized for the nation's life for Erica Phillips and for, uh, Mandy Kinnard. And I'm gonna read just a, a brief portion of this. When Erica Phillips saw the data in August on how many students from Hopkins County District were missing, breakfast each morning, she was determined to find a way to implement in breakfast after the bell District 5. To join forces with Mandy Kinnard to gain the support of District leaders and people for which print parlance model would work best in their school. In October, Hopkins County began serving breakfast after the bell at all 18 schools and credit flexibly, uh, and teamwork for the successful di- district-wide communication. Uh, Mrs. Phillips and its parents have already heard from educators that grab and build breakfast has been, has been a great leadership opportunity for their students. And a school nurse reported fewer morning visits thanks to the new opportunity for students to grab breakfast, uh, between classes. So congratulations to them for thinking outside the box and tackling this issue that we've had in Hopkins for quite a while. Uh, very successful start, and we hope that that grows with their leadership. Congratulations to Erica Phillips and Mandy.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job, good job.
Happy day.
To be served, uh, there's another note, Sturgill, the five thousand meals a day alone, um, breakfast and lunches, uh, a day, uh, due to their hard, hardworking efforts on the behind the scene as well, so it goes well beyond this, uh, breakfast use.
Delegations, do we have represent from the MACCBA? Or anybody representing the education committee, I'll be telling you. Not here. Now, what matters is two reports. Two reports. Now we are to, we break the school's report, and it is before the board for approval, consent agenda A, number one, number three, and we will vote on that, then come back and discuss number two and number four.
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Jackie, or second, Kathy.
Sorry, yeah.
Any opposed, debate, if none, if others say aye.
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 Any opposed? Non-opposed, that is passes. Now, we will discuss number two under consent agenda A.
Mr. Speaker. My, the only thing, although I wanted to do is looking at number two, number one, okay, for Dr. Sturgill, number two, um, political policy, page five, we got all those, second reading, would be excluded, and I was, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, I would like to add five point one one six to the.
What was that again, number please?
I have one one six.
Thank you.
So, that, that's called the session we have on that?
I'm doing, yeah.
So, I would present to the board that we would vote on number two, A two, at this time, we're adding five point one one six to be excluded from second and single and final three.
Chris, can you tell us what policy five point one one six is? We don't have it. We, we're not looking at it.
Uh, it's, uh, if personnel staff, staff position and order is vital.
Talks about the creation of position, the dusting course. Those are the topics, those are the.
Okay, I see it.
Anyone willing to make a motion for approval?
This is my, I have motion, if they approve of number two under consent agenda A with the addition of five point one one six, number two.
So we have a motion?
This is Jackie, I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If none opposed, that is approved. Now we will go into discussion on number A four. And that is approval of overnight slash out-of-state field trips.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just in light of the fact of where we are, uh, looking at some of these days, I'm almost positive. And again, the scope of what I discern on Bell D is, I'm probably surprised that a lot of this stuff is not gonna happen. Um, we got into our political parties, I think, there's the bird, probably even gonna have their conventions there. Some of them are in July, obviously, they've already canceled. And so, the fear I have is, is it might take months while them come off of this, and then it, it will be a lot. And I'm not sure that it would benefit us in any way, but, and, 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 and we could come back and approve of these trips if it were, if it were necessary. Uh, that, that can be, you know, um, and, uh, I just like if it was just to hold off on approving anyhow state trip, it would be, well, that's according to the direct of the county, they're waiting for, yeah. I don't know how well they could enforce that, I mean, you know, as the governor DeSantis said in Florida, this does not null and void the constitution of the United States by Bell, if, if it is planned, yes. So, I'm, I was just concerned about, why not just wait and, and not even, uh, approve any kind of trips until such time as we see where this is going? Um, because I'm almost positive based on what I heard just a few minutes ago, very, very positive to say that in 10 days, this thing will peak. Uh, you know, I, I mean, we're growing every day in the number of cases, I think, in Hopkins County right now, there's 14, as I saw a few minutes ago. There are 103 in our region, and I, my daughter, uh, my daughter's father-in-law was diagnosed today, so he probably not even gone to camp. So I was just concerned that we just forego approving any out-of-state trips at this point in time. And you know, we can handle on where we are in the system, and, and, uh, we need to come back and approve them, we can.
So, you would like to say that, to?
Well, I'll tell you what I'll do, and I'll do it this way. Let me do it this way. Mr. Chairman, I make the, on number four, for approval of overnight out-of-state trip, that, under the circumstances of where we are with the coronavirus, that means, if we need to approve these trips, we will do it through the.
We're in the written zone.
How much did you hear that?
I heard the first part, but the other part cut out.
My, was that when, the, the conclusion of the motion was, was that to give, uh, the executive committee, uh, approval to, uh, the out-of-state. Rather than just approving all of them overnight, we hold them off and can receive if necessary, we'll let the executive committee make that decision. And then bring it back to the board, um, whatever we're able to, let's meet again.
Is that a matter?
And that's my motion.
I'll second.
Kathy, was that your people seconded?
I didn't, somebody else did too.
Judy, it's okay.
So Kathy's seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? If no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? So now that brings us to item B, approval of budget amendments. I would like to send those as a group instead of individually.
Chairman, I move we approve the amendments, uh, in, uh, in two days.
We have a motion?
I seconded.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that's your passes. I would say approval purchases over $5,000. And I would here again ask the board to approve one, two, and three. As a whole.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
You have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further?
What does it mean, somebody?
The official end, uh, Easttown High School webinar training for the special department, uh, did highest priority of the three, because that could be and she wants to do another doing, there's no sign for C P E. Uh, they would probably be purchased between now, but while with the coronavirus issue, it probably better it up within, over the summer, but the original COVID to get in the spring, get installed, do the initial training, and then put them in the practice next year.
So really, who they are, um, you know, depending on, you don't want to get caught in a black hole.
And you think because we're in this year that money is the ideal part would be to improvise this year, but this year's been, that's something that's to be.
Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, I'm sure. That brings us to unfinished business, and I don't think we have any. We have no unfinished business? What do you guys, Judy?
Judy is up, okay. Matt, I assume this is directed at you, but I had a senior to approach me who, and, and, you know, I really don't know what the plan is for the end of the year, or what the high schools are doing, but, uh, the senior asked me about the senior class getting their diplomas early becau- if they're not gonna finish the year out. And, or, you know, I, I was trying to think of what would be another solution there, because I know it takes time to actually order the diplomas and get those ready and blah, blah, blah. So, is there, if that's not possible to actually give the diploma, could there be like an early, uh, uh, paper filled out forum that they would graduate at such and such a date at the end of school, so that they can get jobs that actually work 40 hours a week? But they can't get a, you know, specific job unless they have a, a diploma? And I can't hear that at all.
So, that's been circulated a little bit. Judy, can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. Um, we will find out a little bit more about what the state legislature and the state board of education would like to do for end of year requirements on, uh, April 9. So I will have more information after Thursday morning, uh, all with the board of education. They're discussing specifically graduate requirements if, if these schools in Tennessee do not come back prior to the end of the year. Uh, we have already worked with our principals as of this morning, actually started last week, but as of this morning, they're looking at three scenarios. One is, uh, potentially coming up with a later date for graduation, uh, sometime in June or July, for example, uh, a virtual graduation, which isn't real popular, but we're working on those plans. Maybe if we get, uh, group people together safely. And then, uh, third, uh, possibility would be looking at something in August. So those are things that our principals are working with their staff on that campus to develop friends, should we need those to be done. Um, I would say that, uh, without giving you an official answer, I would think that if the seniors is wanting to go ahead and call off school for the rest of the year, or if that's gonna be the recommendation, we would follow that. With that being said, we would probably be able to issue, um, some sort of, uh, paperwork that states that the senior involved has met all requirements and is awaiting a diploma or the equivalent of that diploma, given the circumstances of, of the COVID situation.
Right, uh, because you know, they have to wait till August to get a diploma, that just kinda, well, they're gonna go to college too, if there's college open. Um, you know, I just think that that would be a good thing to do for our seniors, to get them, let them go, if, if it's possible. But I also understand that has to come through the state, and, but I wanted to mention that to all of us to be thinking about, you know, those little seniors that are not like my senior year in high school, or your senior year in high school. And, you know, they're ready to, you know, they're just through now, I think, but it was a good thought.
I agree with it.
Matt, what was that third option?
The option, meaning the seniors that were still around here, back in, in early August, toward the start of the school year. And I'm, and I'm just throwing out options here to step this morning, that doesn't even wanna just stick to those three, but it needs to be from principals that are high schools are, are starting to talk with staff and coming up with some, with some plans, should they need an act for those.
That's fine, I just couldn't hear you. Thank you.
Anyone else have any issues under new business? And you know, one of the things that is kind of disturbing the name is the fact that we miss so much of this spring, winter and spring, um, is there, is, is, is everybody gonna make the requirements to graduate, or there's, I mean, as far as that goes, even in the elementary levels to move on to the next level, I mean, gosh, you know, that they're gonna be in a, a rock and hard place for some of these kids that were behind before we lost all this time, and then especially in the lower grades, because those kids, if we don't get them instantiated in these lower grades, they'll go along with them still. And if they're gonna have problems, my granddaughter's one of them, and I've been driving her, my daughter, my daughter's a wall.
So, bring up two, two good questions. Uh, number one, uh, for those that are going to continue in the school system, everybody from a junior and younger, uh, we are looking at plans here, uh, within Hopkins to do a remedial portion of the first part of the school year to fill as many gaps as we can. Uh, there's even some legislation that's being passed around at the state level, looking at potential for summer school. For those students that are in, in town, if, if we get this lifted and we're able to operate a school, um, or a school type setting, there was even talk about, uh, offering funds for systems to offer summer school in order to fill some of those gaps prior to the start of next year. Uh, secondly, we have a look at, uh, after school programs, tutoring, all of, all of the above, if we, if we can pull it off, try to fill some of the gaps we, we've missed, that we need. Um, it's much to raise the graduate requirements of four-year, under eighty days to, to meet that demand for the diploma. It's another that you have been ready, so those are two different issues that we're working with, and I know people.
Maybe this is, you go, rather than go to school longer on, oh, we go to nine, I would say. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I, I'm just kidding, I mean, you know, that, that's just my thinking, you know, go, you know, I, I, I would admit that when I was a student, I wasn't serving the fence box, and I needed that in class. My, my abilities at home were limited, even though I had books for it, but and I, and I, my granddaughter, she would live in the, where the world came to it in while she's out of school. I'm concerned that she's in the third grade, and she lives on the house, she's gonna be behind this, the whole school. We don't know what tomorrow's. Yeah, because, I mean, I'm, I'm, today, there was an article today that came out that said that, that the government knew this was kind of a month before it ever even happened. So, that puts us on back to the first year. The wise is one, the problem is is where the cash to get out, that's why I'm with it, that is, it's gonna be done.
Any unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman, Chris, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I was just gonna mention that the Department of Ed, Education, the Tennessee Department of Education, has launched a survey on their website, and it is to, uh, solicit our, uh, the, our thoughts. our, uh, the, our thoughts on the two trillion dollars that the, uh, federal government passed. It's going to end up coming down to the states. And it's, it's very short. It's two questions. I took it, not even five minutes, but it will help give feedback to, uh, Nashville on what our needs are in Hawkins County. And if you, if we, all of us can fill it out, that, I think that would be great.
That's for board members.
It's for, it's for citizens, it's for parents, it's for teachers, uh, administrators, it's for board members. Uh, we can all, and it, and it's gonna speak specifically, it's gonna ask you specifically about where we live and what our needs are. So that when that money comes through, they can, you know, they can divide it up maybe on how it's gonna be needed most and where. But if I link, if you go to Department, Tennessee Department of Education, there's a link on there on the bottom right, and it's two questions. It doesn't take any time at all.
Thank you, nation, uh, that we, um, if, uh, our friends want, uh, in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So before, remind me, budget workshop Thursdays at five P M, and the format will be the same as this. Again, well, I, I, I come to the ten.
What time is that?
Five.
Start the workshop at five P M.
And we'll have the link out on the website in the same place, same manner that we had the link for this.
Well, I hope I don't call you, boy.
You can call me anytime, as I'm glad.
Chris, before we, uh, adjourn, can I ask a question about, um, the financial study and what we plan to do with that, uh, in the next weeks and months to come? I, are we gonna defer that?
Yes, I will, until we can get some.
The concern is with myself going off the board, we're gonna put a new board member out there that's not had any experience or any information at all on this decision, and he's gonna be voting on something that's gonna be really tough. You, you know, if we don't get to it before September.
It's like, we're gonna have to take things like that, if we don't know what.
Sure.
I, I don't wanna say, yeah, we're gonna try to have a meeting in June. I, I don't know.
Well, it, it would be nice if we could have it before Bob leaves.
And I can't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The other thing is, it's had such a budget impact on us as well, and we're gonna start into the budget. And, um, I, 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 I don't know how else to do that other than to just jump in there and maybe look at some alternatives to let the community have input, just like we're doing tonight.
I can believe it, my. I just believe it, baby, it's that, it's that your administration, you all want to schedule a meeting? You can't? Us as a group. And, and everybody, I was thinking about that today, that I was, there was some information presented today. Um, thinking about it, and yes, I know the process is starting.
Well, perhaps if Matt can brainstorm and come up with his staff and maybe present some recommendations to us, then certainly I'm all ears to hearing what's recommended on how to take the next step.
I was, this is my personal thoughts on this. I think we wanna see, um, when it's possible.
Chris, I can't hear you. I'm having major problems as well.
Same, same here.
I'm hearing some background noise.
Yes, same. Hey, Allison. Hi.
Getting any closure?
Well, I'm thinking I hear somebody, someone TV.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Not mine, I'm in the car.
If you're not a board member, you should be on mute.
Let's do this. Bob, I appreciate your concern for that. And bringing that question to the table. So let's. Let's talk him that.
We're having a big problem now.
Schedule that, you mean?
Sounds good.
Oh, Lordy.
Anything else? We will have a workshop Thursday at five P M, and our next regular meeting will be.
Judy, it's raining here. Oh.
So many. Everybody stay safe and healthy.
You too.
Stay humble, buddy. Be crazy like me.
Yeah. For the age of four, granddaddy.
To you, thank you for our verses every day.
Which one of those?
Oh, Lordy. All right.
Versions of that one.
Okay, they just cut it, cut it off. If you didn't hear, they're gonna have a budget workshop the same way on Thursday at five o'clock, so I'll try to livestream that the same way I did here. You can also watch it directly on the, on the, uh, Hawkins County Schools website. That's H C K twelve dot net. Oh, well. Just, just Google Hawkins County Schools and you'll find it. So anyways, I'm gonna go ahead and sign off.